Good evening, I would like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen's meeting for Monday, September 9th. If you'd all please stand and start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this is a, I was here, a posted meeting, but it's not a regular meeting. It's, uh, it was called to cover some town board appointments that we thought would overflow some, uh, other meetings or be too long for other meetings. So, the agenda is for, uh, seven o'clock, we're gonna look at the Sustainability Committee. Uh, 7:30 we'll talk about the Economic Development Committee, and at, uh, 7:30 Economic Development, eight o'clock Housing Committee. And, um, that is all the business we have for tonight. Um, do you want to make some input? I mean, so, I'm just, but, um...
Yeah, we'll probably discuss something about how we gotta do it.
Yeah, we'll discuss some of it, okay. Um, so, I don't know, how do we wanna run this? Do we wanna go through each interview? I know when we did bicycling, Bicycle Committee, we didn't talk, everybody didn't have to talk, everybody wasn't even present. How do we wanna run tonight? Do you have any suggestions?
Well, I'd like to, um, make a suggestion. Why don't we figure out how large these committees are gonna, talk about how large these committees are gonna be? Um, that will give us some indication moving forward when, I mean, Sustainability's got fifteen applicants, Economics got eleven, Housing's got seven.
I'm okay with, you know, this, for instance, seven, that's not too large. For some of those committees I've worked on, um, I've worked on committees as large as ten. Um, things work, uh, you know, sometimes you have problems with quorums, but, um, you know, we'll, that shouldn't keep us away from making a larger committee, so, um...
That's the only, uh, I mean, a large committee has a lot to offer, but if everybody is not participating, then the quorum issue becomes predominant.
And sometimes it's nicer to keep them tied, that gives you a chance to, 'cause you have to have a full, um, half of, um, yeah, the right, for, to, to have a quorum, a quorum present. So if you have nine or eleven, it only takes, it takes the same amount as one more, so. But, uh, I mean, I'm not opposed to a nine or eleven, and if we get to Sustainability and everybody wants, you know, a few people that, um, want to be in the other committee? We could try fifteen, fourteen.
I have no, I have no issue with that either. More, I think that... I think the, the quorum thing is the only thing I'm taking on. That's, that's what, that's, that's all I, well, seven is good.
And in looking at the seven here, for Housing Committee, two of them, Hillary and Paolo, have both, um, Hillary's put her name on for Economic Development, and they both have put their names on for Sustainability Committee.
Add one to that, Ian's on there twice, too. He's, um...
I'm happy to go wherever you think I can best be used. I'm Hillary.
I'm gonna guess, Hillary.
So, I want you to put me where you think I can best be used.
Oh, yes, you're right, and on Economic Development. So, if, and I'm not suggesting that we do this, but if Ian, Paolo, Hillary, that brings that, and Jamie withdrew, Jamie Cruz withdrew today, that brings that to eleven.
Yeah, I, I...
Okay. Is Paolo here? Does he have strong feelings? Maybe he's up here.
Jen, I had this, I went through the same thing, myself, to take Jamie off, that also, it does bring it down to eleven, and some of the people are already down the bottom, they've been filling roles there for the town.
And I know...
And it gets, like, you had mentioned, I think, Alex and Ted had mentioned, too, to get as many people involved as possible.
Yeah.
I really like seeing all these new names.
Right.
It's kinda fun to see some of the old names that you've served with before, but it's also great to see new names.
And also, um, I, I also heard that Dick Taylor, um, wants to really get on the Conservation Commission, so, uh, I know that's an appointment. I think he's the only one that's on there, and that's his priority, so, he said that you didn't scratch him off the Economic Development Committee.
Cause he is, he is the only applicant I understand for...
Conservation.
So that leaves nine.
Right.
What, dropping my line?
Well, they're just being shifted, they're not, they're being shifted.
All right, no, no, I understand that, yeah.
My thought is, because we have not really defined a really, um, fork cornered charge for these committees, that the larger committees are actually better, because we're act, we're asking them to help us develop what the charge of the committee is. And, um, in that, in that way, a larger number's better, because we get more of a representation.
Well, I think the Economic Development Committee isn't existent, it was an existing committee back in the day, um, so, is there any records of that, that we could pull up?
Yeah, there's a report that was, uh, generated in two thousand five or two thousand six, um, which still exists.
So maybe, I mean, to, to your point, Alex...
Lots happened since then.
I think that, you know, if, if we get some of those old charges and get them to these committees that, I know Sustainability, I don't think...
Well, the Housing Committee is the other one that was in existence before. They issued a, a report in two thousand five, uh, which led to the, uh, Plan Production Report, now called the Housing Production Plan, which we need to update and submit a new one, so, um, it's helpful to have that report there. But Sustainability, as you say, is the, is the only new committee that, that does not have, there's no prior committee that we can point to that had a charge. I think, I think things have changed a lot since, uh, some of these committees were first constituted, and I, and I don't think we should, uh, I mean, the historic information is important, but I don't think we should give them the same charge. The community is very different, and...
I, I don't think I was saying, give them the same charge, I think it's, you know, what was the, what was the focus in two thousand five? And you're right, two thousand five was a long time ago, but what was the focus back then? And, I, you know, if I was a member, I'd like to see that report, what was written, what's been done, um, and to maybe carry forward. They may say, hey, you know what, there were some great ideas here that just never got carried forward, so, just informational purposes, I think.
I think that's, whoever gets on that committee sits down and takes, they, they can, they can take a look at it.
Absolutely.
And say, you know, this is brand new, we can use this and this, but we're gonna go in this direction.
Sure, absolutely.
You don't wanna have the exact same charge, and we're not asking to have the same charge.
No, no.
So, so then, is the, the first instructions for our future committee members, uh, going to be, uh, to come back and talk about what the scope of the job is going to be, and have that discussion, and then, then we can make adjustments from there? Is that, is that where we are with this?
My, I envision a lot of these, they're, just, give them a blank, blank, um, chalkboard, wait a while, blank, go. And, blank slate, there you go. And, uh, let them come back and see what they think, if we wanna form it, or, you know, anybody, any other boards wanna have input, anybody else, that's, there you go.
And I think at that time, we can talk about whether any members of this board wants to get involved, or, maybe, you know, the Housing Committee makes sense that maybe the Planning Board should be involved there, you know? But, at least give the, the committees an opportunity to at least meet and say, hey, this is what we have, what are we all thinking, and kinda gel into something, uh, some type of charge. That's what I was thinking anyways.
Can I ask, can I sort of question or make a point?
Um, and just, yeah, you ready? Are we, I still wanna get these, you guys all done? Okay, go ahead. Name and address for the record, please.
Scott Lewis, Mishoga Road here in Littleton. As an applicant, the whole process so far has been a little bit, um, odd or awkward inasmuch as, it's like applying for a job without a job description, right? So, the freedom of having a blank piece of paper sounds great on one hand, but on the other hand, I can't speak for all the applicants. Some of us have never done anything like this before, but we have relevant domain expertise and skills, and we wanna help, and we have interest. And so, just keep that in mind as you're thinking about blank sheet of paper versus a little bit of boundaries of freedom. Um, and I know the priorities are part of the answer to that, but...
Yeah, I think it's a balance, because when we're on Seward, we're always saying, this is our charge, this is our charge, and I think we can give you a charge, but I don't wanna pigeonhole any committee into one thing because of what we may think the vision is. So, I think, I think we're on a good track where we say, why don't you go, come up with what you feel is important? I mean, that's really what these, these are about, resident committees, come up with what you, come up with your charge or your mission statement, come back to us, we'll see if we can, if we craft our view of it, I think it's great.
I think at the same time, I think this board could give really broad guidelines, and leave it at that, then let them, and let the committees take off and put in all the details.
Well, and also, we have goals, you know, uh, from our meeting, uh, in July, so there, that's some framework, not for Sustainability Committee, but we're very lucky to have Keith Bergman, who has a pulse on sustainability issues.
There's your reference.
And he, and he is offered to be helpful to the Sustainability Committee, and...
Well, that...
Well, yes, of course, but especially the...
Especially that.
Yeah, so...
All right. So for Sustainability, um, the one, the multiple advocates, Ian Emery, who had, but he, his priority was to be on Economic Development, so is that one?
Is he here?
Can we back up a second?
Oh, there he is, yay, you're here. Do you have a priority among the three?
Uh, Economic Development would be great.
Okay.
Okay.
Alex, go ahead.
So are we going to engage in a discussion, to be fair to the applicants and who will be appointees, uh, later tonight? Do we have a discussion beforehand, or where we, you know, the vague area of where we wanna go, or do we go ahead and we do our interviews, and then we say, okay, let's have a discussion about what these two committees are gonna do? I, I'm thinking, you know, in some of the questions I'm gonna ask, I'm probably gonna get good ideas from people, and, um, but I think they should leave the room with, with at least knowing where the sidelines are.
Okay.
Well, I think, as Jenna pointed out, I mean, based on our goals, I mean, the only one that really doesn't have any specifics or that broad brush that you said, Joe, is the Sustainability Committee. The others have at least, you know, what we were thinking of as we took, had taken on, uh, these committees as goals.
Well, I think we can...
Unless you wanna read those right out prior, you know, talk about the Housing Committee and talk the Board of Selectmen goal, and then roll into, maybe, if anybody wants to be interviewed, or talk about themselves, or, uh, the boards has any questions for specific applicants in regards to the Housing Committee?
Okay.
That way they, they have at least a picture, folks have at least a, a glimpse of what our goal was, and then we can roll that into some type of interview process, or if you wanna talk, if you don't wanna talk.
Well, here's what I was thinking, I mean, we're, it seemed like when we were going, that, we were going through some of these, we had Sustainability down to eleven, and we had, you know, Economic Development down to, I think it was down to nine, and we had, uh, Housing Committee, but it seems like they're almost there, that, I don't know if we, do we need to make, do we have, I mean, everybody wants to be on there, we see the resumes, do we just make appointments or interviews?
I just all open it up to them to see if they wanna see a statement, if they wanna make a statement.
I would say, when we open it up to every committee, go through every single name, if they're here and they wanna speak, then...
Absolutely.
Then again, someone might not wanna speak.
And that's okay, too. That's okay, too.
I think we should talk to anybody that's here that wants to speak.
I see people that wanna speak.
I mean, we asked them to come here, we better talk to them.
All right. So, the candidates that we have prioritized, it seems to be, for Sustainability was Jack Applebaum, sorry, uh, Brian Balakonis, Katie Caruth, Joshua Cook, Tracy Cutler, Rick Finley, Aaron Healy, Jasmine Karamati, Paulo Lorio.
Well, keep moving.
Well, no, but he listed that as one. See, he listed Sustainability as his first one, yes.
But, if we're gonna go with like seven on the bottom and nine, you wanna fill all these...
All right, well, let's see where we end up with it. All right, so, with, all right, let's just humor me and keep Paulo in there, Don McGyver, Madhavi Oliver, Sarah Rambacker, and that gives us one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
But if Paulo goes down to the Housing, you get eleven.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
And to keep numbers...
Even.
Up.
Yeah.
So, not that anybody is discounted, but if there's anybody on the list that I just read who would like to speak, those are the candidates that we've narrowed down to, if you wanna speak to, uh, anything that you have to say about this. Go ahead, Don.
Sure, Don McGyver. Um, rather than talk about my background, I haven't talked about the whole process, it's good hearing from people volunteered that came forward, because that doesn't happen all that often. I think it's great having this many equal law skills, I know some of these people have skills they haven't been involved before, I think if you can absorb and accept as many as you can, that's good. I agree, having quorum is an issue at times. Personally, for myself, I just seem to be a resource, having a lot of connections to different places and making things happen. As far as the scope of the committee, sustainable, it's very broad. If you look at other towns such as Groton, for example, they have a very good sustainable committee, but they also have a green energy committee. You serve, you serve your energy staff within the sustainability. Yeah, I think there even can be subcommittees, and they could do a lot of very good things. So, that, that's my pitch, you know, is to enable people to get on board, you know, you hope that stay engaged, they would do more work, fresh blood, it's very helpful. And, yeah, I just assume to be a resource, you know, I don't necessarily have to be an official member, but I think this is a good place to move ahead on, and a lot of people warned why we haven't previously. That, that's my pitch.
So you're backing out of, are you withdrawing your application, or you're staying in?
I'm, I guess enthusiastic going ahead with the committee and however it works. I mean, you seem to be in training folks and stuff, I'm saying you might need all those people.
Okay, but for yourself, for yourself, I'm, I'm just saying, it sounded like you wanted to be a resource, but not a committee member.
I could do it either way. I, I, yeah, between, you know, someone who's new that's enthusiastic and wants to do it personally, I'd say take the new person for my own personal...
Well, we have eleven.
We got eleven, we got down to eleven, yeah.
We went from fifteen to eleven really quickly. So, an odd number makes sense for voting purposes.
So, I would like to invite, um, well, Hillary's already spoken that she'll go anywhere, so, uh, bumping off of Sustainability.
I try to be flexible.
All right. Paulo is, gotta be bumped off. Jamie Cruz is already withdrawn, uh, Ian Emery was gonna go onto another one?
You prefer the economic...
He could prefer it in Economic Development anyway.
But, you know, he'd fit perfect on the housing to make seven, so that's another thought.
But then that forces us to eight on Economic Development.
Let's, all right, let's, okay, so what we can do, we can tackle that when we get to it, but right now, he's not on Sustainability.
You're not on Sustainability. All right, so we have eleven.
I'm not on Sustainability.
Correct, all right. So, I see, I think, five people who are here that I recognize for Sustainability, and they should speak, if only to introduce themselves.
Oh, Rick, you gotta, you don't, you don't introduce...
Please, no introduction, but go ahead, for the record.
Rick Finley, Rick Road, and I hate to speak generally, but I'm, I am, as an architect, I'm interested in energy specifically, and my involvement with, um, farming in town, interest in farming in town, the food issues are also high on my west in terms of what we should be looking at.
In the back, I'm sorry.
I'm Tracy Cutter, and I'm from Harbor Lab, and, uh, this is the first time I've done anything like this, actually, but I'm very interested in, um, all kinds of sustainability issues, so I'm excited about it, and, um, just see how it goes.
Great. How long have you been in town?
Uh, eight years.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'm...
Oh, excuse me, sir, yeah, Jack.
I'm Jack Applebaum.
I was ninety-nine percent sure, I'm sorry.
I want to congratulate the board on having a Sustainability Committee. I think it's vital to have that, and I'd be happy to serve on it, although if there's need to step out, I'd be happy to step out. Uh, I've been involved in the field for a good number of years now. I started Elcan, Littleton Climate Action Network, about eight years back, and thanks to Keith Bergman, we had a wonderful meeting at that time, which point he addressed the meeting, and we followed up, but we didn't get very far. So I would like to see the committee work well, dealing with energy questions, dealing with water questions, dealing with air quality, all the things that make life sustainable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Madhavi, Madhavi Oliver.
Okay.
I live on Bristman Road. Uh, I've seen a lot of action going on in the town of Acton under the auspices of Green Acton, so I was interested in us, in Littleton forming something called Green Littleton, and spreading the message, encouraging our younger generation to participate in things like composting, recycling. A lot of them do it, but, you know, it would increase it.
Okay. Anybody else? Yes, sir, in the back, sorry.
Hi, I'm Brian Bellacell, this is my, um, fifteen, about Gil, uh, Road in Littleton, and, um, I've been in the environmental health and safety field for about thirty years, so, um, and, you know, I've kept been in town for about ten years, and, you know, I've got my son, Eric Cooper, who's in third grade, and one of the reasons really why I focus on sustainability is for the next generation. That's an important aspect for me, and, um, that's a good reason why I wanna be on the committee, to help out for the future generations. You know, a lot of my background is in solid waste management, so I, I've implemented a lot of composting programs at work and throughout, throughout our, our business. Plus, I've got a, um, small, large, organic farm at home, and...
It's beautiful. Brian is our neighbor. It's quite lovely.
And spent a lot of time with Rick and the Brook, and, and the trails behind are part of, actually, the trail systems on our property, so we're, we're a town on that, and very active in that, so, uh, I'm excited to hear the committee going forward and listen, ready to start participating.
Okay. Thank you, Ray. Anybody else have some other questions?
I'm Aaron Healy, I'm an environmental consultant, I've been in the field for about twenty-three years, I started out...
Close by that.
Yeah.
I didn't close it, but...
And it's still closed.
It's not a small world.
Yeah.
So, um, and that was like twenty-two years ago.
Um, I work, um, across media, so, um, but I concentrate mostly in water, and I do a lot of work with, um, developing projects, mostly big projects, but it'd be fun to look at small projects, and how to do that in a, a balanced way. So, um, sustainability to me is, it cuts across everything. So, what, my main question, I think the, the thing we're gonna have to deal with is looking across the other committees, and trying not to butt heads, because, um, it's all cross-cutting, so sustainability is something that kind of integrates into everything, but people have a mindset, I think, of what they think about it as being fairly narrow, but, so I'm interested in seeing how it works out, and trying to apply it broadly on how we, um, develop our resources and, and live here.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Hi.
Hi, I'm Sarah Rambacker, Hartwell Avenue, and I don't have any credentials like that, but I'm so excited that I could be on a committee with people with them. I, um, have a real interest in sustainability of all, I, I, like Aaron was saying, just, I think it's so broad, such a broad area, and, um, I was thinking that my perspective as a resident, um, could be useful to, as a resident who wants to become sustainable, and I can, um, bring that to the committee to, um, see how, how we can, as a town, and all the residents in it, become sustainable.
Well, it's great, even, even if you feel you don't have the qualification, I think, like you said, as a resident, you do, I mean, it's great to have the cross-section of people, so, yeah, all different perspectives. I think it sounds pretty well-rounded. Anybody else?
Ready?
Sure.
Move with the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following members to indefinite terms in the Sustainability Committee. Jack Applebaum, Brian Balakonis, Katie Caruth, Joshua Cook, Tracy Cutler, Rick Finley, Aaron Healy, Jasmine Karamati, Don McGyver, Madhavi Oliver, and Sarah Rambacker.
Second? All those in favor?
Oh, there's more. And, number two, to establish the membership of the committee at eleven members, and to invite each committee to present a recommendation. This committee to present a recommendation, recommend a charge or mission statement to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Now, a second.
Okay.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
You should mention about signing up, going to the town clerk's office.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And just for the record, my name is Cutter, last name is C-U-T-T-E-R.
Oh, it's Cutler, yeah.
C-U-T-T-E-R, oh, sorry.
Um, do we wanna talk about a charge now, or now that we have a committee, do we wanna...
Well, I, I think this, this being the only committee that doesn't have a, any, we should probably at least have some type of discussion and, uh, the broad brush that we've heard that the Sustainable Committee is gonna be looking at, so...
Yeah, I think it's, I think here it's gonna be multifaceted, you're gonna be looking at ways the town can become more green, to preserve energy, uh, then you're gonna maybe look at some sort of program for homeowners to, like you said, to, of course, become more green in their house, and, and things like that, so...
Yeah, and we've also compiled, and, and I'm sure many of the folks here have their own examples of, of mission statements of similar committees in other towns as well, so it's sort of a state of art of what, what's hap, what does a statement, a Sustainability Committee do, and we can look at the, sort of the menu of things that, that we'd like to do and that others are doing, and then come up with a, uh, proposed list or a mission statement and bring that to the board.
Yeah, sounds great.
I do have a question of everybody to just apply, how many of you have never served on a committee for the town before?
One, two...
That's nothing to be ashamed of, really.
Well, that's great.
I'll, I'll give you a little story.
Where's seven thirty? Time for an extra minute. I can find a watch, it's, you know what, like, like they say, it's seven o'clock somewhere, it's seven thirty somewhere.
But, the, the point is that, you know, a few years ago, we started a committee called the Voter, uh, Study Committee to Increase Voter Participation, pretty open-ended thing. I mean, we figured that there was an end in sight, and we have been working hard and working strong, and I'm privileged to, uh, to work with the people that I've, uh, worked with there. It's rewarding, but it goes on for a while, so, um, I hope you're, you're all interested to the degree that you'll stick it out and, and, um, see the changes that you'll bring about.
We're not planning on ever moving, we're packing up.
How's that committee, has that committee changed membership at all, 'cause it's a long one, 'cause I know, I mean, it's not like you're handcuffed to this committee, 'cause I know Seward has kinda changed, and there's people coming in and going once in a while, but has...
Um, yeah, we've had some people that have, that have gotten off, we've had some other people that are interested, uh, there's another person who's expressed interest to be on the committee group, so, it's, uh, we have a steady stream of people that come in and talk to us.
Good. I didn't want people to feel that they were handcuffed forever.
Is there a length of time that we're asked to commit to it?
Indefinite right now, so... I mean, I think, I think the expectation...
Long time.
It's indefinite, yes, not a fine deadline.
I think the expectation would be minimum of a year, you wanna report back at Maytown meeting, and then if there's anything, you know, I would say a year, I mean...
There's, there's actually a section of the Selectmen Policies that says, appointed boards are one years or three years, unless otherwise negotiated or specified, so, I don't know if anybody else had read that, but I came up with an expectation to be one of those two things.
Yep. We don't like to do that for more than... We should've waited until, yeah, either one or three, yeah, to be renewed. All right. Well, thank you all, if you want to quietly make your exit while we move on.
Or stay.
Stick around, yeah, if you like.
Want to mention, we actually should go to the town clerk, right?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Lay down for a process.
Yeah, those you have, you do have to get, you do have to get sworn in at the town clerk before your first meeting. Um, how do we set up the first meeting?
We'll be in touch with the members by email, this is true of all three committees, we'll be in touch with all of you by email and, or, uh, Meeting Wizard or something to schedule a date for the first meetings. And we have the town clerk actually on call to be able to swear in about four or five members of the other new committee, the Bicycle Committee, last, uh, whatever that was, Thursday night?
Thursday.
Yeah, so, 'cause I kept, we kept pulling her out of your meeting, so that she could swear the members at mine. So we're returning favor, we pulled Keith out of his meeting.
All right, moving on, now we're on to, uh, Economic Development. I think we have a process here, so if we wanna start naming people that we feel are candidates for this committee.
Ian wants to stay.
Ian wants it. All right, we'll start at the top, okay? Robert Brownson.
If I can stay, I'd like to stay.
Oh, yeah, certainly, certainly, I just, yeah, well, you haven't been appointed to anything yet, right?
I've been recently...
I just didn't want those people feeling that they had to stay.
No, no, I mean, if I can stay on Economic Development, that's great, but if I need to move to Housing, that's...
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. So we have, uh, Robert Brownson, who is Edward?
Coickendall.
Coickendall, Ian Emery, that's made this a priority, Lisa Flanagan, Paul Levy, Scott Lewis, Neil O'Leary, Ivan Piegassek, Phil Prinville, and Hillary is, Hillary Watt. So where were we going with this now? Dick Taylor was pulled off.
Ivan's at the Water and, um...
Yeah.
Electric light meeting thing.
What was, so we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, moving, well, if we move Hillary to Housing.
But I heard her just say that she would prefer this committee.
I mean, I'm excited about Economic Development, but I can be excited about Housing, too, if that's... but I can be excited about Housing too, if that's a need.
Well, is Paulo already, so Paulo didn't finish one though.
Well, that's why, did we put Paulo on the, we didn't put Paulo on Sustainability. Paulo's gonna go on the Housing, because we have the seven. You don't have seven.
But he's not on Economic Development, so it's like a one, two, three.
Unless Ian wants to do both.
Or Hillary wanted to vote.
Well, that's 10, I guess.
Yeah. No, yeah, Hillary would have.
Right now, we have 10 people who are economic, and six on Housing.
Why only, why only six?
Because Ian, unless Ian wants to do both.
Oh, 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 Ian.
And Hillary wants, or if neither of you want to, then you are at five for Housing.
But they did put applicants in for Housing too, so, I mean.
It's a good thing you're here.
I mean, six is not, if we gotta go with six, that's fine. I don't, you know, it's not, prefer, you just need four instead of, you need four, six is a four, seven, four, this seems all right. But, I mean, give it a shot. If they don't work out and they're not making quorms, I mean, I think there's a lot of new people who are excited about this stuff, so I think for the, you're gonna get quorms, you're gonna get people showing up.
And as we've done in the past, if more folks come forward and say we want to join and the committee has no issue with it, we increase the number on the committees, and we've done that in the past, and we can do it in the future.
Yeah.
You know, so.
Okay.
Do you want two or one?
Yes, you.
Well.
I would prefer one.
I recommend, I recommend first timers start with one, yeah. I don't want, because I wouldn't want anybody to get burned out.
I'm hyper-organized, and I've been on a lot of different projects and juggled multiple tasks in a variety of nonprofit and for-profit sectors. But ideally, if I can be on one, sure, that would probably be the best. I'd like to put all my efforts that I can in that one meeting for now.
I mean, we can try 10 and six. Right, because we're at, right, 10 and six?
No. She just wants one.
That's 10 and five.
Do you want Economic or Housing?
Economics, my preference, because that's where I feel like I have more experience.
That's where we go.
Oh, Ian's up top, he's up top too.
If we put Ian and Hillary on the Housing, then we had seven there and you had nine on the other one.
Right, so now we have five there.
Five there, which is.
Yeah, but 10 here.
One, two. The other thing I want to say is that Neil O'Leary submitted a letter. I don't know if, Joe, if you want to read it, or, I mean, no one's really, I don't know if anyone's really speaking, if you want to read that letter.
So, before we get into that, so are we saying we're gonna do 10 on the Economic? I mean, that's a bigger crowd, and that's six out of the 10.
The other thing with a big committee like this, you could have the committee themselves break into two subcommittees where a quorum is three out of five.
But the main committee is the Economic Development Committee, so they'd have to still, even subcommittees are fine, but the charge of the main committee is.
Right. So, when they do meet, they'd have to still make a six. But if they then left off, then I think is your point, that is a whole.
If we get Ian and Hillary to agree and we have up to them to serve on the Housing Committee, then you'd have nine and seven.
I just see her passion in this Economic Development, and he's got the background too. I just, sorry, then.
With respect to Jim's comment, I think initially, I think there won't be a problem getting a quorum. I think if they work through the charge, then they'll also have an idea of how big the committee should ultimately take shape, and we can make adjustments at that point.
Okay. So, right now, we have the 10 potential candidates that we discussed, and if any of those 10 would like to speak now, please feel free.
No, probably.
Thank you, Paul Blavy, New Estate Road, 5100 State Road. Just want to applaud the board for re-establishing, actually, except for all of these committees that existed years ago, it was a growth study committee, which was before the term Sustainability was coined, largely the same issues, and we've had at least two versions of the Housing Committee in the past 20 years. They all make some progress, and the Coast Economic Development Committee we had before. But a point that I, in your interests and in the other interests of other elected and appointed boards that are spoken with statute, I think it's important that you let all us know, remind us that our role is advisory, and, you know, as much as folks may want to get involved, whatever the issue is, housing, economic development, the rest of it, letting the board has established their responsibility. You folks have your responsibility and the rest of it, and I think it provides with the value that all these appointed committees can do, and I encourage you to use as many as you can safely manage as they get a lot of people involved and do a lot of your labor for you. So, you know, I think people, even if the specific charge is yet to be worked out, I think the point ought to be re-enforced that, you know, we're not gonna be out there writing laws and, you know, saying yay and nay on projects that's got our responsibility, that's yours.
Good point. Anybody else?
I'm just really excited to get started and help in any way we can. We've been in Littleton for four years now. Andrew's enjoying his time on Historic Commission. And I, but I sort of pseudo-grew up in Littleton. My mom was a public school teacher here for 17 years, so spent a lot of after-school time here and was involved in a lot of town things through her. So, when we came back to the area four years ago from the lovely state of Maryland, it was, this was our town. This is where we knew we wanted to be. So, it's very exciting for me to get involved. And my dad is very happy, smiling at home after serving 15 years on the Stove School Committee. Good, finally someone else in the family's back up. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Thank you. Any other?
Scott Lewis, as I mentioned earlier, new to this sort of thing, but I think I bring some relevant knowledge from the business community. In fact, the way I would label myself is I'm a high-tech marketing executive who has three acres in Littleton and a tractor and a vegetable garden. So, I think I sit on that fine line between keeping the character of the town, but also, in Littleton 11 years, my taxes have more than doubled, and my income certainly hasn't kept pace. So, I'd love to see a little more Economic Development at the same time and make sure it's in balance.
We have some exciting things coming down the pipeline across 49512, so crossing the police stations, so that's exciting.
Anybody else? Okay.
Did such a good job with those names.
Move with the Board of Selectmen vote to appoint the following members to indefinite terms. Should I say that, or should I say one-year terms? Indefinite terms on the Economic Development Committee: Robert Brownson, Edward Coikindal, Ian Emery, Lisa Flanagan, Paul Blavy, Scott Lewis, Neil O'Leary, Ivan, who's his name again?
Pegasic.
Oh, right, Pegasic. Joseph Prendeville, and Hillary lost his wad.
Second?
Wait, not yet.
Oh.
And to establish the membership of the committee at 10 members and to invite each committee, and to invite this committee to present a recommended charge or mission statement to the Board of Selectmen for approval.
Second. Do you need to make a distinction between which Robert Brownson this is? Because isn't this 91 DeShouma Road and, but.
Correct. The correct address should be 142 Harvard Road, correct.
Is there a millination or something that distinguishes you?
He has one.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay. 142 Harvard, okay. Motion been made, second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Post. All right. Thank you very much. Look forward to hearing from you, and don't forget to get sworn in, and we'll be here in front. Keith.
Get you organized. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we have 20 minutes until.
I mean, it's not a public hearing. Do we have to?
No.
Oh, we can just charge there.
Alex might have a story.
Do you have a 20-minute story?
I don't have a 20-minute one.
If he doesn't have a 20-minute one, I'm sure Keith doesn't.
Bartlet is not there. Doug Shaw is not here. I know Barbara McCray is here. Is Paulo here? No. Are you David Campbell?
Yes.
All right. You know what, I think David and Barbara is plenty enough